Everyone to the regular city council meeting Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I'll invite you at this time to stand by my invitation to the board of councilmen.
Goodness gracious, your solemn and everlasting Father, thou art God and God among us. Father, we thank you to be able to come to this meeting, Father, in this hall called the City Hall of Harpsville. First of all, Lord, we want to tell you, thank you, God, for all that you've done for the city of Harpsville. Thanks for the one way, but Lord, we thank you for your protection, your guidance, that they did not go the way they were here. My Lord, as we assemble to do the business of the city of Harpsville, we ask for your grace and mercy, your loving kindness, and your love to enter our hearts and minds, so that we may be able to conduct the city, the business of the city of Harpsville fairly and equally. And Father, we thank you now for the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, who is the Savior of the world in this holiday season. Let's know that you keep us protected and lead in all of the blessings that we may get, our Lord Jesus Christ with us.
Amen. Amen. Through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I agree on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our November seventh, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meeting and the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two special city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve it?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, one person, I have just a point to make. I'm saying that we need to amend minutes, but in the minutes of the seventh of November and the twenty-first, council voted on expenditures one time from Arbor Day, next time we voted to go to the green edition. But we don't specify the amount that we approve, not just because it's a good practice that when we approve money and protect it, our Lord has saved the minutes, so that we can actually go back and review it.
So we think we can make a motion to put those amounts into minutes. Okay, I'll take that, Mr. McGee's motion is in the second, so in the second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of amending the minutes to reflect on Mr. McGee's concerns, I'll please say aye. Okay, the minutes are approved, here's a minute. Okay, thank you so much. Um, our next item, I'm forward presentation, we have the proclamation of Arbor Day. Um, please come forward and we will.
She wanna do Arbor Day?
We're gonna do Arbor Day.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um, and for those of you don't know, Harpsville is a tree city. We've had a tree city for decades. And, and one of the, um, requirements of being a tree city is to spend X amount of money on putting new trees in. And also, uh, we have to celebrate Arbor Day, and I think we've got that set up for next Monday, is that correct?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday, so, um, eleven o'clock over near the government, right on the Vista. So, um, whereas South Carolina observes Arbor Day on the first Friday of December, and whereas trees can reduce the amount of erosion and help protect our precious topsoil, and they are renewable energy source, giving us paper, wood, and fuel for fires. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic viability of businesses, and beautify our community. So we are proclaiming December second in Harpsville as Arbor Day.
There's your party.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
All right, um, our next item, um, with council's permission, I'm gonna switch around, um, item B and item C. Uh, under four, yard debris discussion, if I sit in order again, hold on.
Sure, um, sure, so council asked me to go ahead and explain, there's some questions asked in last council meeting that we had last week, about some of the information regarding the pilot program we did for our yard debris program, uh, some of the reasons why I did some information about where our tonnage has gone out. So we began the, uh, yard debris pilot program with the brown roll cards in July of twenty-twenty. We had two hundred and thirty-seven cards issued during that time. We ran that for two years to see how the feedback got, and that was very positive, um, people enjoyed using their roll cards. They really saved us a lot of time, and so we decided to move forward with the ordinance that we have before you. The reason why is because of the amount of yard debris that we're picking up. Um, the residential garbage total, so from January to November this year, we picked up eighteen hundred seventy-eight tons worth of garbage, so that's solid waste into roll cards, garbage cars. We picked up twenty-five hundred tons of yard debris. So we are more than, almost fifty percent more yard debris than we are picking up actual garbage in the city. That actually equals out to five hundred trips to the landfill that we've done so far this year. And with our gas economy and the way things go, that's about sixty-five hundred dollars just in fuel alone, and it's thirty-one dollars an hour for labor, so that's about sixty-five thousand dollars a day for just to run the yard debris you pick up. Uh, that's not including our garbage pickup. So the yard debris is a little volume of the most, the most time-consuming across the country, and that's like the charge of your sanitation bill. So sanitation is pick-up of solid waste and water. Um, it's not charging for the garbage, that's a service we offer in addition to them. The problem we're running into is that it's becoming so time-consuming that an equivalent's getting torn up, that we're having to make a choice. Is the program viable, continue in its current state? The answer was no, we could not continue in its current state, we're willing to pick up things up. We couldn't offer the same local service, and we're worried about actually continuing to offer that same local service without doing something. So that's why we introduced the pilot program for yard debris. The idea was to speed up the process, to get us a little bit faster in time, also make it easier on our equipment and trucks and people to pick up the yard debris. Um, from now, we introduce the ordinance, and start your discussion, our budget, which was done in April of twenty-twenty-two, and ultimately we decided to do this mid-year and then before the grace period. We're gonna start in January, then we'll do the grace period in a year, and we're gonna offer some time to get the roll cards out, to get people used to doing bags, and then also reviving the program at that time. Currently, we have six hundred forty-nine roll cards issued, we have a hundred on the waiting list, we're getting ready to order another three hundred roll cards or so. And we are gonna be handing out free bags for everyone for a year, so they can have bags to hand out. So we're trying to minimize the impact on our residents, but the idea is that we're trying to keep these leaves out of the storm drain, out of the levers, uh, speed up the process, and make it a program that is self-sustaining going forward, because right now we can't continue that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, any question for the council? Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments, and we have several people, and I'll call you, uh, as you have signed in. I'll remind you, uh, we try to limit public comments to three minutes or less. If you desire to be put on the agenda, you can do that as an agenda item next month, and you can speak as long as you want to within reason. Uh, but because we have, I think, eight people here, uh, please be conscious that everybody has time. And, um, as you come forward, I ask you to state your name and address of the minutes, so that can be, uh, properly noted. Okay, Sheila Mullis, first one. Yes, ma'am, please come, you may sit or stand, whatever you're comfortable with, okay?
Mister Mayor, thirteen, a member of the council. My name is Sheila Mullis, I live at six thirteen West College Avenue. And I want to thank you for allowing me this time to express my concerns about the yard debris collection change. Also, I'd like to thank Bobby McGee for his quick response to my email regarding this meeting. I'm pretty sure I'm wasting my time, and yours, because I recently learned that a significant amount of money was spent on cards, which the city manager has already objected to, that some of them issue. And containers for some residents, we can afford to purchase extra ones. We have yard service to maintain their yards. But then there are those of us who are not so young and live on a fixed income. You're talking about bags for a year, or after that year, what do we begin? Placing yard debris in one container, which I understand from the letter from the sanitation manager, we get one container. And I think you can purchase one for eighty-five dollars or something, but anyway, that's not feasible for many people. Um, but one container and numerous bags would not be sufficient for the leaves, and, and not necessarily grass trappings or anything else, but just the leaves. And our lots, we have two lots on College Avenue. Um, I'm also concerned about the trees that the city has planted in the median, or whatever you wanna call it, on the street side of the sidewalk, that we have to maintain. We called, we called, my husband called somebody because there's a lot of dead in one of those trees, and, and he said, can you come trim it up? No, they have a budget to deal with. So we have to pick up deadlands, and we have to rip leaves, and most of those leaves fall in the street along the curb, which then blocks the gutter, which I don't know that I've ever seen the city down there unblocking the gutter. I know my husband and other neighbors have gone down and had to move leaves off that gutter in order for water to run, and we still have standing water because the trees that the city planted is causing water to stand on the curbing in front of my house. It's raising up the sidewalk, which is a safety factor, but yet we have to maintain these trees that the city planted, or that Dr. Tupper planted, and whoever planted them. But is that not a city responsibility? And you were saying, you quoted some numbers about salaries, but did the cost of the containers offset that? And putting leaves and yard debris in a container is not gonna, um, eradicate the problem we have with leaves in the street and in the curb, because not all residents break up leaves or do anything. I mean, we do, our neighbors do, but you can go right down College right now, and you can see leaves just lined up along the curb, and you can see water standing, and by putting them in a container or that, that's not gonna alleviate that problem. And I have a question as to why, why this change? What are the benefits? And I know you mentioned, you mentioned some items, I'm not sure those are benefits, maybe for the city, but not for the homeowners. And, um, you know, it's just not gonna solve the problem. And I'm wondering if there's any, you know, what's the, um, penalty for non-compliance? Is there compliance, or what is the penalty? Well, there be a penalty. So I'm just requesting that y'all reconsider this and allow us not to have to put leaves and yard debris in containers and bags.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next on the list is Alan Norwood.
Alan Norwood, six nineteen West College Avenue, uh, Mayor Pro Tem in the county. Thank y'all for what you do, appreciate the service you provide to the city. Uh, a lot of what I wanna say, Sheila has already asked it, but my first question on the list was what the city hopes to accomplish by this ordinance? Is it a money savings, or is it lack of manpower that's too bad? I, I, I just don't see any way this is gonna be a savings to the city. I, I'd like an answer on that, I'd like to see some numbers on it, what kind of study was going on it? If there's other cities doing it, but I'd like to see some actual numbers on how that's gonna save the city money to put in programs or something. Uh, would the city pick up the leaves on, on the street? Uh, my yard is clean, I mulp my leaves, I don't ever put any of my leaves out of my yard on the street. So you don't have to pick up leaves, the gutter is full of leaves. These trees, she was talking about pine oaks, they should have never been planted between the curb and sidewalk, you can't put it. Pine oak can, that is gonna get fifty, sixty feet tall in the roots. In my yard, my sidewalk is pushed up about three inches, nobody's gonna run by it, so you can't put a baby carrier down it without a lot of building clay, which I can't really see that heavy already, but so far, we've been lucky. It's pushed out the curb and raised the gutter, so I've got water standing in front of my yard, it's been there since Saturday, it's just about gone today. But I keep it clean, but if, if we gotta rake up the city's leaves and put them in the trash, you know, I, I don't intend to do that, but I, I would like to see the city come and do that. I'd like the mission to remove that tree, and I would have it leave my yard. Sorry about Arbor Day thing, but I'm about to remove two river birds, and I'd like to remove that other tree, and I would have it removed from. Clearly, uh, lawn care contractors, we got a lot of them operating in the city. I know it's been a moment since nineteen ninety-six, but I'm familiar with it, they put cleaning yard, that's probably how that was, or they're not doing it. I understand it's laid in the lobby, I gotta ask her the question on the way in. There's a claim that, I don't understand that, uh, it's not being done. I saw two of them today on College Avenue, clean yard, they're building the street for a lot, so admit that's not being done. Uh, that needs to be enforced, the ordinance is there, that's twenty percent of your lease app right there, if it'd be enforced, that would've been placed in ninety-six. Never been, never been enforced, but I'm, but I'm aware. And I asked about the business license, do they have that business license, she said yes, but I kinda doubt them. That's, that's what I'm saying, but I, I'd like to see some answers to some of these questions that you have, so we can say, like, some of them can't be re-kept.
And thank you.
And to your point, I was going home for lunch today, and there's a commercial guy in front of what used to be the Van Power Place on West College. He was blowing every lane out into the street.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I could, I, I showed you this picture of him from my house, I, I don't know if the city manager is aware of this, uh, this type of situation, but I, I'd just like to show you this, what I'm talking about. This is my yard, I've got two dollar creatures, a pinot to plant it, I can't even move it. And it's pushed the curb up and the gutter, and then the sidewalk pushed up, and the water standing in front of my yard. And I keep it clean, but I can't do anything with the water.
Thank you, Alan. Um, third on the list is, uh, Brady Weaver with, uh, the cloud resident.
As a Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, council members, city manager, and, uh, chief clerk and assistant there. Of course, I've appeared before you a month or so ago as a spokesperson, person, uh, pro tem for a group that lived along Lake Shore, Goodson, and the cloud. My purpose today is to say thank you for your assistance in what you have done, what you dug up, and what reasonable people, the term you use, understand in helping us at the cloud road. Look forward to seeing your presence there again, and, and just wanna say thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, five fifty-one Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, fourth on the list is Tony Tornabis.
Tornabis.
I'm sorry.
A little mouthful.
Okay, yes, sir, and your name and address, correct the place.
Tony Tornabis, eight zero nine West Home Avenue. I appreciate your time, ladies and gentlemen, for letting us and citizens address you regarding the issue. I can re-read the same points the previous speakers have, um, but the biggest question I have is, is the carts, the bags, the waste that's gonna be placed out there is not going to pick itself up. There is still a cost involved. So are we cutting people's jobs, are we finding new wonderful machinery to do this, to replace what we have? And then the quantitative savings involved, is it worth the negative impacts on our quality of life here in Harpsville? I've been there about four years, I absolutely love it. Looked right there on West College, excuse me, West Home Avenue, a lot of trees. I spend a lot of time raking up leaves from my yard, from my neighbor's trees. It just happened to be there, it's a community effort, that we're all powerful. And we all take a lot of pride in living in the city of Harpsville. So what is it worth to negatively impact our quality of life here in such a fashion that, that affects every member of our community? And I find it ironic that, um, they were doing an Arbor Day proclamation that we're having this shoved in our laps. Because we're gonna be a true city, you folks get to pick up the, put the bill. I appreciate your time, see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, fifth on the list is, uh, Mr. Drew Hamilton, yard debris.
Drew Hamilton, degree zero five, the Hoom Lane parcel. Thank you. Do we even write what you've heard over and over again, again, how ironic that we did a front proclamation about it? My neighborhood is known as Willow Oak Park. And you believe it or not, we have a ton of oaks. In my yard alone, I've got seventeen trees. Just imagine what I get. I also love to work in my yard, and I have a very, um, what I consider a nice yard, and I keep it trimmed. And Clemson recommended, a couple of years ago, no mulch, bagged. So to haul my debris off is going to be beyond my capability. Lung carts will definitely not do it, particularly on every other way to pick up. And ironically, during the COVID, my wife and I got tired of looking each other in the four walls of our house, so we did tours of South Carolina, and one of those tours, we went back to our hometown of Lancaster, and we rode around. And one of the things that came out to us is that people in Lancaster really didn't care how their houses looked in regards to what we experienced since, uh, seventy-eight, oh, seventy-four, when we moved to Harpsville. Harpsville cares about their yards, it cares what the houses look like, and if you make it more difficult, which this is going to do, you're gonna get the result you can expect. You're gonna get the city looking worse. And I would hope that you'll reconsider and come up with another way. It's a driving force, it's money, I understand. Bags is another way to tax it. You want to pick up my leaves, just raise my taxes a little bit, and let's do that, let's don't worry about carts and bags and other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, um, number six, uh, Kim Northcutt, yard debris.
Kim Northcutt, nine eleven and Avenue, um, Mayor Pro Tem, that's the side keeps. Um, it is about yard debris. Um, if you're gonna implement a program, why don't you order enough carts for everybody to have one? Here's, I mean, I'm sure the city has, what, ten thousand homeowners? There may be more than the city of Harpsville, and you got, what, six hundred carts? That's not gonna cut it. Now, if you're gonna make them pay for the second one, we've already heard all these people, one cart is gonna get filled up mighty quick. Um, a lot of people are single homeowners. Um, you know, we're gonna cut tree limbs as small as we can, 'cause we can't pick them up and put them in a cart. Um, you know, people just can't afford to not have a cart or not to be able to put their debris by the road like they are accustomed to. And I agree, we just implemented proclamation for Arbor Day, and we've already got all these complaints about the trees we currently have that are disrupting the sidewalks down Carolina Avenue on both sides, the middle of Carolina Avenue. Whoever thought about planting trees in the middle of a road should have, um, probably talked with somebody else. But, um, that's not very, um, smart on our part, because now we've got roads that we need to resurface as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seth Loder, one thirty-one, Lorin Drive. Appreciate all y'all having me tonight. Uh, I'm here on behalf of my neighbor, she's probably mid-eighties, uh, going go about her yard, and you know, I, I'm just, I'm just worried, you know, what, what this issue can cause her, you know, doing extra steps. Uh, you know, one, one extra step, yeah, I, I hope you see me at eighties, but, but you know, one, one extra step closer to that curb or whatever, you know, that, that's just putting her in more hazards. Um, I'm really not buying the deal about less yard waste. I, I just honestly, you know, I got five pumpkins on my front steps, if I put each pumpkin in a bag, I still got five pumpkin. I mean, I'm just, you know, just as soon as you put a regulation on sizes and everything, you're still gonna produce the same amount of yard waste. I'm just not buying that. Um, you know, appreciate all y'all do, uh, it's my first time coming to a meeting I've, I, you know, ever, and, uh, you know, pretty excited to be here, you know, hope not to be a frequent flyer, but, uh, appreciate y'all and all y'all do. Fire Department and Police Department, thank y'all. All right, and, uh, Mr. Randy.
Yes, sir. Hey. Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, fellow council members, uh, I've had a lot of questions, a lot of questions asked, but it's been answered tonight. But one thing is, um, I've been sitting here thinking, tonys don't change, uh, Seth touched on it, that's one thing. I mean, if you're gonna have it bagged, uh, I guess you're, I'm sorry.
City manager.
City manager, lots of me, but. But tonys, tonys ain't gonna change. So if that's an issue, as bad as I hate to say this, as bad as I hate to pay taxes, I would be willing to give a little more to get it done. You know, I think we pay enough now to have this simple fee, we have great police protection, we have great fire protection, and, you know, that's not much to ask for a homeowner to have our yard, and I have the worst yard in town, I'm not blind. You know, I have fellow neighbors here, I have fellow property right beside Mr. Mullis, and his is a magnet, mine's not, don't look at it, you know, I understand that. But I just feel like it's a basic service, that we should try to figure out some kind of way it can get solved. Harpsville's a beautiful place, I was raised at the county, but I've always been considering myself in Harpsville, and I just think there's a way we can come to some type of terms agreement, and I know it's about the money, but we can figure out what we need to do with these, with this yard debris. Thank y'all, appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, Randy.
Mister Local Behavior, address the record.
Yes, ma'am, eleven linens, uh, West Carolina. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's input, um, as I said at the outset, this is for information only, and I, I did ask, uh, the city manager to go first, um, to your comments, and maybe it kind of explains some things. I know it doesn't answer all the questions, and, uh, the way the city council's, um, session is set up, we cannot take action on it. We have to advertise everything in advance, we can receive information and use that information to make future decisions on that. But I do appreciate, you know, democracy is not yet in Harpsville, I appreciate everybody coming and making your point of view.
Mayor Pro Tem, I have a question.
Sorry.
Has this come too far that there's no turning back?
It, it will, it will be implemented January first, I think, with your, um, input today, I think all members of council will be looking to see how that goes. Um, uh, last week, we had three members of, uh, the city come to speak before our special city council meeting, and I made the comment that I had spent eight, my wife and I had spent eight hours in our yards, and then since that time, I've spent six more hours, so I have world-class leaves, so I am, I am weaky a hundred percent with, uh, how this is gonna work. So, um, but, um, please, and Seth, please come back.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And Miss Mullis asked a question, what do we all do?
Well, hey. You know, I was saying the same thing, uh, I didn't mean to tie ordinance, but I'm gonna add to this, uh, you really don't have to rake the yard. You know, and I don't think there's no criticism down, I mean, punish me if you don't do the yard. But I can give you an example, I've drove along College Avenue across Harpsville, it takes two people to work that across. And I noticed a lot of residents are dumping the leaves in the street. They should be up off the street on the sidewalk, so.
Man, why, why do we put it on the street? Because the equipment that they use to pick and run, they get holes.
That's true, so, yeah, so, so that can save you signs for every action and opposite reaction, right? So I'm gonna get this, and I talked to some friends out, out of state, state of the game, state of the room, I brought it up, they, they take bagging as a normal thing to do. Then the cost of the bags, I went around, I went to Lowe's, Ace, Harbor Freight, Price Bags, and they're kind of like forty cents a bag, cheaper than I found per baggage included tax. That could cost some people, I've bags, I didn't do it, my friend did, six bags out of my front yard. I think the most problem is the labor tends to be a bag and the, the leaves. So we should give this thing a chance. Give it time, try it here, if it doesn't work, revisit the problem. Because I think this is, we can get it on right, whether we work for the good of the community or just by for individual. You know, I got, I got a problem, I don't mind raking yard, I just hate picking up the leaves. So let's look at overall, not just as individual, we, sometimes we get too focused on how it affects me. Let's look at how it affects the city. It may not be as bad as it sounds. If not, we can always revisit, that's what you call democracy, can always change.
I think it's worth parting on that saying, democracy isn't dead, so it has not gone too far. We can, we can, we can still revisit, and I wanna park that conversation on that idea, democracy is not dead. I do believe if it has as negative of an impact as you all do feel, it's worth that conversation with this council at noon. Yeah, to pardon that, democracy is not dead.
And he, and he made a good point. Sometimes if you want something, you gotta pay for it. And now, the way we're doing that may be the best for all, because if you wanna get a, uh, I don't know how much of people cost vacuum, people would cost to, to, to pick up, it makes dollars a ton, so what you gotta do? Spread that cost among the, to your resident, town, a tax or a fee. Makes tons of time. So what you gotta do, spread that cause among the, to your resident, town, a tax or a fee. So let's try plan A. See, if that doesn't work, go way to B.
And I would like to encourage all of you, you know, I saw Randy, I kind of asked him to wait, but, you know, we're in the community. You know how to get ahold of us. Have those conversations. And in the interest of moving the agenda along, I won't have to do that, but, you know, after the meeting, you know, get, get with us, talk to us and, you know, we're approachable. We're approachable.
I would like to say, please, I'm, I'm keeping short. I said this at the last meeting. My hope, part of this is that if faced with the situation here with leaves or your debris, that it will, it will act as a catalyst for us to think about, could I be doing something different with that? Could it be used as mulch or could be used somewhere else around the house? The one example I'll give is in my office, I have twelve pine oaks, a lot of oaks down there. But instead of raking those leaves, once they're raked off the grass, we just take them, put them over in between the azaleas. We've been doing that for twenty-five or twenty-six years now, just to enrich the soil there. Pine straw gets put out, pine straw, and then you use so many of the ways, you know, mulch or sun there. So I, I encourage you to walk away and think about, do I need to put all those things out there? And Seth wants to say, tonics could be the same. Maybe it doesn't have to be the same if we would get creative. This solution's not good for everybody. It's better for us as a city, for all the citizens together, but it certainly will cause more hardship on the soil than it will on those. And we knew that. We talked about this in April, May, and June before passing this ordinance. This is a situation, as I said last week, too, I can think of no greater ways to protect our money than hauling materials that would decompose naturally to a landfill. And a truck gets eight miles a gallon, taking two people to do that and the hours that we're doing. And I think we made five hundred and fifty-two trips just for land waste this year already, but be similar still. We had a lot, we had a lot of leaves fallen two weeks ago. It's just amazing. But I can tell a taxpayer's money, I can't think of anything worse than picking up leaves and burying them in the ground or maybe something else to be done with. And the manpower and the expense, that's your dollars spent at those times. So let's just think about that.
Can I make this coming? Okay, we don't charge these too. We invested in the mulch because of this. But that does not, that doesn't answer the city trees explaining all the residents who don't do anything with their leaves and they might not put long the surveying and stop, right? It doesn't solve that problem.
All right. I'm gonna, prerogative here, I'm gonna move things along. Item five on our agenda is bag, bagged up that more.
Yeah, I just had two updates for you. Again, Arbor Day is December twentieth, Thursday AM. And the business is, we're planning another trip.
No.
And, but I think there is a time.
Council and free, council and free.
I'll check everyone's. The hole's already, but the hole's already done. James T. Bell, junior retirement celebration, please, it's December fourteenth, Council. Four thirty, anyone else who wants to come, we'll, 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 nine, nine thirty, medical center. And that day as well, Christmas lifting for employees, please come, Council, very able to come, it's at noon to two, TV conference.
December fourteenth.
The fourteenth, this one is that. All right. And then, of course, this holiday hours closing, the holidays are closing coming for the holidays. That seven fourteen tomorrow from noon to two, the city office will be closed. So we're gonna allow our staff to go in together. And then Christmas holidays, December twenty-third, that Monday and Tuesday, the twenty-seventh will be closed. And New Year's holiday, Monday, January second will be closed. So if you have a bit of water going there, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to, thank.
The Indian for Canal is tomorrow.
Yes, as well. Yes, we have the canal bits coming back at five o'clock tomorrow.
And I'd like to thank everybody involved in the Christmas parade. I thought it went on really well. We had three or four bands, which, first time I remember that.
It's the largest parade we've had so far.
And I watched it from the sideline, so I could watch grandchildren, but I thought it went really well.
Is that the first time in the inception of the city you had all group bands out in the town?
Maybe.
That was interesting.
It was really good. All right. Consil agenda, received information only. Under new business, item number six, Mr. Manager, would you please, please presentation?
Yes, sir. It's ordinance four, 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 six, an ordinance to amend appendix A zoning article six, A. Cluster housing development, section seven, minimum space between principal buildings.
Okay. Do we have a motion to pass ordinance four, 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 six?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor, present that we approve ordinance four, 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 six.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Moore, can you give us some background on that?
Sure. This came up in a planning submission for some cluster housing developments, actually out of Bay Road, near the hospital. And it's what we call cluster housing, so allows for a little bit smaller lots because that's what the market's gonna dictate right now. And the question can, can we make the setbacks, the space between the houses smaller to allow for more, more houses potentially to be in, more opportunities, more open space, that type of thing. And when we re-read the ordinance, we agreed that cluster housing by definition is the difference of just regular single housing, single tenant housing, made sense for it to be a little bit denser. So we went in and submitted a planning commission, we had a great conversation about it, talking about the future of potential other updates. But this came out to reduce it from twenty feet total, ten feet for each house, to ten feet total, five foot for each house. These are very popular down in Charleston and some of our current developments.
Okay, thank you so much. So we've had a motion, second, from ordinance four, 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 six. Any other discussion? Hearing all those in favor passing this ordinance, please seek and file by seven nine.
Aye.
Dis opposed by nay?
Nay.
Okay. Passes, one nay vote. Okay. Item seven on the agenda, resolution twelve twenty-two oh one. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Supreme of City Hartsville, with other support of South Carolina Governor's School for Science and Mathematics, DSSM, acquisition of adjacent properties for vertical perfect.
Okay. Is there a motion on resolution twelve twenty-two oh one?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I salute the approval of resolution twelve dash twenty-two dash zero.
Hey, any discussion? I think Mr. McGee had a point.
Just, just one thing, that we changed the sentence, third part of the sentence, they're in place to say government school for science and mathematics foundation. Because they were one of those.
Doing that scriptural error, so we can do that somehow. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance, excuse me, resolution twelve twenty-two oh one, please seek and file by seven nine.
Aye.
Dis opposed, there is no opposition, resolution was passed. And is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for showing up.